Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this meeting to water at this time. If everyone would please stand for our pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please remain standing for a moment of silence. Wave. We're not over our maximum capacity, are we? All right, good answer.
We have more chairs, too.
Yeah, there's some more chairs over here. We've got, I think this is the biggest attendance that we've had in our new boardroom. So welcome, everyone. Very momentous tonight that we'll get on, we'll get to in just a little bit. Good evening to my fellow board members. Everybody's had a chance to look at the minutes of the September 28th special called work session meeting and the minutes of the October 3rd regularly scheduled meeting. So starting first, I will need a motion to approve the September 28th special called work session.
Motion.
Motion is second. All in favor, raise your right hands. Next, I'll need a motion for the October 3rd regular, regular Board of Education meeting to be approved as presented.
Motion.
Motion is second. All in favor, raise your right hand. And last, everybody's had a chance to look at our closed session minutes from the October 3rd meeting. If there's any changes to that, we'll make that in closed session. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve as presented.
Motion.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, raise your right hand. Katie, I forgot to say hello to you. Can you hear us okay?
Uh-oh. Uh-oh.
Let's just try that again. We, I think you can hear us, but we can't hear you just yet.
We need to get her here.
We're gonna let our technical folks work on that while we continue, okay? Do we have any additions or deletions to our agenda?
No, sir, we do not.
Here none. I need a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Motion.
Motion is second. All in favor, raise your right hands. All right, moving on to matters of the public. Our good news, Mr. Rice.
Good evening.
Good evening.
We're gonna do the Rotary Students of the Month first. If I could get the two students to come up, please. First, from Pamlico County Middle School, and this was submitted by Principal Rebecca Lanchi. Pamlico County Middle School is proud to recognize Gavin Lockwood as November Rotary Student of the Month. Gavin is exceptionally hardworking, putting forth great effort on all school assignments. Gavin is polite and respectful to both the staff and his peers. He is a friend to many. Gavin always goes above and beyond the expectations because he is intrinsically motivated to do well in school and to be a good friend. We are lucky to have Gavin among us at Pamlico County Middle School. Congratulations Gavin Lockwood, Pamlico County Middle School's November Rotary Student of the Month. I have a little plaque here, and I have our four-way test point. Isn't the truth, basically this is of all the things we say or do, isn't the truth, is it fair to all concerned? Will build better goodwill and better friendships, and will be beneficial to all concerned? This is for you. Okay, next from Pamlico County High School, and this is submitted by Principal Brandon Holton. Trayvon Munford is a freshman at Pamlico County High School, and he is already a leader in and outside the classroom. Trayvon is well-rounded student, currently maintaining an A average. He participates in class, and you can always count on his friendly demeanor and smile. In addition, Trayvon is a member of the high school football team. Congratulations, Trayvon Munford, Pamlico County High School's November Rotary Student of the Month. Next, the good news. We'll have Ms. Jackson.
First of all, I want to say Gavin and Trayvon, congratulations on your special recognition. Both of you sound like you're great students, and keep up the great work. At this time, we're gonna move into 2.1.3. We're gonna recognize and thank Mr. Paul Delamar Jr. and Ms. Judy Humphries for their years of service to the students and staff of Pamlico County Schools. So they have served the past eight years on this Board of Education, and there's so many, so much wisdom and knowledge for schools that have been greatly appreciated by this board, by, I think, our superintendent, by her cabinet, by all our teachers, principals, and you're gonna be greatly missed. Our two gentlemen out there, y'all got some big seats to fill, so I'm just not putting any pressure on you. But personally, I just wanna say thanks. You know, Mr. Delamar, you have, I keep calling you my mentor, and you have been, and you'll continue to be. You have so many years of knowledge, and I'd be crazy not to tap into that. And same for you, Ms. Humphries. You were a former teacher of mine.
You don't have to tell everything.
And you were my mentor to one year that I did teach here. So for me, a special thank you for what y'all have done for Pamlico County the past eight years. I'm opening it up now to any other board members that would like to express their gratitude and thanks.
John, before they, well, they probably aren't gonna say anything. Anyway, I have just a little bit to say. My connection with Pamlico County Schools has been a long one. Perhaps longer than anybody in the room, except Paul Delamar. But he's older than I am. I went to school here myself. My children went to school here. My grandchildren are in school here. Of course, Noah finished last year. And out of the 35 years of public education, I worked here 25 years, and now eight years on this board. So Pamlico County Schools and Pamlico County is very near and dear to my heart. I want the very, very best for our students. I also wanna thank the public for letting me serve on this board for the last eight years. I wanna thank my fellow board members. As I think back, we had some tough decisions that we had to make, and, and I feel good about the work that we've done. And as for our new board members, I want to welcome them and wish them the very best. Both Jamie and Eric are here tonight. You'll take your seats next month and the law began. I just have to tell you that it makes it much, much easier to step down and away, knowing that our school system's gonna have, have a good board and be in good hands. So thank you all.
Let me mention real quick, I meant to mention this. It's great to see your families here, your children, your grandchildren, and, and we, we're glad to see you. And it's 'cause this is a, it's a, it's a sad night of celebration for us, you know, those of us sitting up here.
John, I wanna thank everyone for their kindness. It's, I started working here in 1969. Many of you were not born then. It's been, it's been a, it's been a memorable time. Started out as an assistant principal at the middle school. I actually was hired as a teacher, but the third day, they made me the assistant principal because they needed one. It, it was, it's, now you know where I get my loudness from. It, it's been a, it's been a real, it's been a real privilege. I've served on the board twice, two different terms, a four-year term, then went off for eight years and come back for eight more years. I can honestly say that this board, for the last eight years, is the best board I've ever worked with. And people, I've worked with a lot of boards. I was essentially the secretary to the board for more than 25 years. I took all the board minutes. I did all of that. And it, it was, it's, it's, it's been interesting. I've seen a lot of stuff. You think, well, this hasn't happened before. People, it's all happened before. Anything that can happen has already happened. There's nothing original anymore. But it's been a real privilege to serve on this board. I've served with some great superintendents, with, with contrasting leadership styles. But for their time, they were equally effective. And I, I was real lucky in that respect. I never had anyone that was not, well, I won't go that far. Most were really, most were really easy to work with. And so I thank this board. I thank the public for allowing me to serve for the past, well, 12 years on the school board. It seems like I've retired so many times, you keep wondering. I told them tonight, old soldiers never die, they just fade away. I believe that was General MacArthur. And Judy and I decided that we're fading away tonight.
That was the discussion coming in.
But this, this has been a really good board to work with. So many school systems have boards that can't get along. That is not the case of this board. This board works well together. And I thank you for letting me serve, and I probably should say more, but I'm not going to. Thank you.
Fellow board members, y'all step up to the mic.
I'd just like to say that I'm, I was truly blessed, this is my second term, truly blessed to be able to sit beside this wonderful woman here who's full of knowledge and wisdom. She's very blessed. I shared something with her, before it started, and I'll just say between us, but I was very impressed by her, with her knowledge when I came to her. Now, Mr. Delamar, let me just say, Mr. Delamar, can you hear me?
I can hear you.
He has a way of tuning me out. But I love him. And I, I want to say that I know the keys to his success now, and that is his wonderful wife, Cynthia. He's the head, but she's the neck that means it. Thank you, Mr. Delamar. Thank you, and I appreciate you so very much for your knowledge and your wisdom.
Thank you, thank you. It, it's interesting. Before every board meeting, when I leave the house, she says, please not, don't do anything that you shouldn't do. Don't say that. True story. Sometimes my filter is very, very small.
Other board members?
I've worked alongside Ms. Humphries and Mr. Delamar for 35-plus years in different capacities, and it's a very bittersweet time for me because I'm going to miss you both greatly. I want to thank you both for your dedication and your many years of serving Pamlico County Schools and our students. You both share many of the same exemplary characteristics that make you such valuable board members. One thing that I've observed about both of you is that you're both very passionate about two things. First, every decision that you make, I've watched you, you make it based on what is right and what is best for students, first, first and foremost. And secondly, you always try to make decisions that will provide positive support and, and help for teachers. I've noticed that in both of you. And I would like to thank you for always being willing to share your wealth of knowledge and your experience. And from the time that I was a new teacher in the classroom until this past year when I was a new board member, you've always been willing to listen and advise and share your wisdom and, and offer support to me, and I appreciate that. I've always respected you both. And I want to thank you again for your dedication and your service, and I wish you both the best in your future. And I'm going to miss you greatly, but have fun.
Any other comments? This might be dangerous, but I might have to limit you to like two or three minutes. If there's anyone in the public that would like to just say a few words, you're, you're definitely welcome to. Everybody's quiet. All right, well, I think y'all seen the, what these two individuals mean to this county, this board, and what they've done for Pamlico County Schools. Ms. Jackson?
So y'all didn't think I was not gonna talk, right? So again, when I started here in 1989, 34 years ago, both of them were here, and I've worked with them in and out of different capacities. And for the past, well, all the years that I've been superintendent, they've been amazing board members. And really because, we, we didn't always agree, we rarely agreed, to be honest, right, Cynthia? She would tell him to be nice. But they always gave me support and different ways to look at things. And I've learned so much from both of them. Like I said, even when we didn't agree, 100% of the time, they were always giving me advice about making decisions about what's best for children, because that's why we're here. So I thank y'all. I will greatly miss you. You do have some great replacements. They are big seats to fill, but I appreciate you so much. I could tell some stories, but I'm, I'm not going to. And I'll just say, we, we had, and this is in my superintendent's report, but we had a dinner, we got together, just the board members and then Steve Curtis and myself on Thursday, and we just talked about us. We didn't talk about school. We talked about our families and what they're gonna do now with their time without me calling them and community people calling them. And it was really nice, and I appreciate that. And I, and I sent everyone a text and said like, that I really, really enjoyed that. It was just really nice to just talk about other things. And so I appreciate you guys. I'm gonna miss you greatly, but we still have your cell phone numbers unless you change them. So with that, we're gonna ask the two of you to please come down, and Mr. Prescott and I are gonna present you with a certificate. Like they said, they've retired several times, so we figured they didn't want another plaque. On behalf of Pamlico County Schools, we'd like to present you with these certificates and these flowers that you see here. And Cynthia, you, you gotta take these, or he said he's not gonna take them home. So we just appreciate all that you have done for the students and the staff and for the community in Pamlico County. Thank you very much. Don't go anywhere yet. At this time, what most of you do know, I'm sure, is that this is not just a board member role. This is about the families also, because they probably had to hear a lot of angst, and they had to deal with a lot of things that they were dealing with. And so for that, we would like for all the families to come and have a picture and just stand up. Let us applaud you for being so amazing while we let, you let us for them for the last eight years. So Mr. Delamar's, family and friends that are here to support him, I think a lot of them are already standing up, but if y'all will please stand up so we can applaud you. Would y'all come up for a picture, please? Anyone that wants to be in the picture? I need Reg and Diane, and Jim Bayless, and Nancy, and Greg. Is that right? This is the whole family and friend affair, and the, and the loud baby and her daddy. Make sure we can see Paul and his certificate. Y'all just kinda scooch in together. Scooch in real tight. Help him out. All right, everybody look this way. Everybody say cheese. It is. Everybody say cheese. Look at Elizabeth. All right, thank you. Thank y'all so much. Let's give Mr. Delmar a round of applause, please. And at this time, Ms. Humphries and her family, if you will please come forward. Move a little bit to the left, if y'all will. A little bit that way, there you go. And let's give Ms. Humphries a big round of applause. Thank you.
That's the end of our good news tonight. If you were here just for the good news, you feel free to leave, or you're welcome to stay through the meeting. It's up to you. They've got a lot of exciting things to talk about tonight.
We have a lot of fun.
I'm not through, we got public comment.
You're not finished?
So everybody's left, Mr. Delmar, but I'm gonna still let you, I always enjoyed my phone call. I'd be sitting at my desk at work, and I'd see Mr. Delmar, and I'd say hello. He said, John, tell me what's going on. So when I can answer, definitely, I will.
I didn't get to say this, but I've worked with probably 15 or 20 board chairmen at different times, vice chairman. John Prescott is the best board chairman that we've ever had, hands down. Nobody's even close. You're, you're really lucky to have him in the leadership role that he's in.
I have a good mentor. Thank you. You didn't have to say that, but I thank you, but I've had a great mentor, and I still am.
And you know I never say anything I don't believe.
Let's see, we've got one individual who has signed up for public comment tonight, so I need to read this. The Pamlico County Board of Education welcomes the opportunity to hear from the public during its regularly scheduled meetings. I'm having issues with regular tonight. The public comment period is open for members of the public, including parents and students, to voice compliments, concerns, or complaints about performance of school personnel, implementation of board policy, the quality of the education program, or school facilities. According to Policy 1326, presentations are limited to a maximum of three minutes. Obscene, vulgar, or profane statements, personal attacks, and insults, and statements reasonably perceived to be disruptive or eminently threatening to the orderly operation of the meeting shall not be permitted. Ms. Powell?
How's everyone this afternoon? Well, I'm not well. I come to speak about Pamlico County Primary School bullying protocol. The rights of a parent, also the rights of a student. Pamlico County School isn't doing their job. Pamlico County Schools have the right to file juvenile complaints when there is ongoing bullying. How is a child being protected from the bullying when the incidents continue to happen? How many incidents must occur? How are the staff trained on bullying? What trainers have the staff received after returning to school after COVID? Is the training geared towards the younger students? What is the protocol for bullying in grades K through 30? Is it different from high school? It's 2022, and we have seen year after year the results of bullying. And I just want to be proactive, because there will be a time when a victim may decide to stand up to the bully. Rights of a parent. The staff of Pamlico County School has no respect of the parents. If a parent asks you and your staff not to question their child unless they are present, you should honor that request. Even the officer of law states a parent must be present if a child is under 18. And my reason for that request was because I did not want my child to be intimidated by authorities. I'm a phone call away. And the need to know what is going on at school shouldn't come from a third grader. They are not paid staff. Disruptive behaviors in the classroom are not personalities. When is, when it interrupts the learning?
Ms. Powell, you have one minute, okay?
It's up?
No, one minute.
Okay. When is enough enough for a third grader to come home and state the teacher cannot teach but the, because of the kid's behavior? She always has to correct their behavior, and I don't learn anything, because they do not know how to act, is what I hear. What's the next step to ensure my child receives a quality education she deserves? Thank you.
Thank you. All right, at this time, we're going to move on to our superintendent's report. Ms. Jackson?
Thank you, good evening, everyone. Item 3.1 is to introduce our new technology director, who looks really busy right this second. If Dr. Johnson could take over for just a second. Ms. White, would you please come to the podium? Sorry. We are very excited to have Ms. Wendy White back with us in Pamlico County Schools as our new technology director. And I'm gonna give her a chance to introduce herself and just tell us a little bit about herself.
Well, thank you for such a warm welcome that I've had this past week. Last week, on Tuesday was my first day, and a lot of welcome from everyone. I appreciate it so much. As some of you have probably heard, I was in Pamlico County Schools, I was the assistant principal at Fred Anderson a few years ago, so Pamlico Schools is not new to me. And I've recently been at Craven Community College, but was ready to come back to K-12, and I was ready to come back to Pamlico County Schools. And I'm excited to be here and looking forward to helping the district continue the efforts of Dr. Johnson with technology and digital learning in the classroom. So he has paved a great way for me in this role, and looking forward to picking the ball up and, and keep on moving forward. So thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you so much. Again, we are excited. We decided when we, you know, when people transition or retire in and out, we've kind of made some changes. And now that Dr. Johnson is doing CTE and federal programs, technology was a lot. So we decided to bring in somebody that could kind of focus on that and the digital learning piece. So we're very thankful to have her here. Item 3.2 is our membership report, and you can see that for Pamlico Primary, we have remained the same. Fred Anderson, we are at a plus one. The middle school is a minus five. All moves. High school has remained at a, their, their membership for a total of minus four. Item 3.3 is the North Carolina School Board Association Annual Conference in Greensboro, which we will be attending, most of us will be attending, on the 14th through the 16th. If you have not already coordinated your transportation, just make sure you do that prior to Sunday. Any questions or anything about that? I'm looking forward to that. That's always a lot of fun, too, and a lot of really good valuable sessions, too. And everybody seems to come back with a lot of knowledge, so thankful for that. I did already mention item 3.4, which was the dinner reception that we had for Mr. Delmar and Ms. Humphries. There will be something in the Pamlico News this week about them leaving, and there is going to be a picture from that, too. Hiram, Hiram lucked, lucked and just shows up everywhere, and he showed up at the restaurant and took a picture, so. We invited him to stay, but he didn't. So item 3.5, I'm really excited about this. And, Miss Dr. Johnson, I'm not going to steal your thunder, I promise. But this is, this did not have to be approved by the board, but we did want to tell you about our MOU between Pamlico County Schools and Pamlico County Emergency Management for the new CT, the CTE program for EMT courses at Pamlico County High School. And there were, I think, lots of pictures on Facebook. I did a video, Facebook Live, on East Carolina today as a part of our public safety class. And I know Dr. Johnson's going to say a little bit more about that, but my Facebook page is public, if you want to see that land, it was great. But I tell you, one of the things I learned today, they made three or four attempts to get here. And because they are such an integral part of our community, I had no idea how often they are called out. Fog kept them from coming initially, and then they had rescues that they had to go to. But they finally got here, and it was great. The students really enjoyed being able to see that and be a part of that. So we thank Tammy Taylor, the new instructor for public safety, and all the work from Pamlico County Emergency Management and the Rescue Squad, T.W. Harris, they all helped us coordinate that. So we're really excited about this new program. Item 3.6, some of you had an opportunity to go to Myrtle Beach with us, week before last, to look at a school that is very similar to the one that we are hoping to build very soon, since we did get the $50 million grant. If you didn't hear about that, I'm just letting you know. But we're very excited. We took a team, we have another meeting scheduled so that we can kind of coordinate what are some things that we liked and didn't like. So we're on the ground floor, there's still a lot of work to do. We took teachers, we took board members, we invited the commissioners, the county manager came, we had central office staff. One of the things that was really important was to make sure we had teachers that would be in that, in that school, that 612 school. But I also felt like for this first trip, it was really important for it to be people that had been impacted by the flooding. And all four teachers, the two from the middle school and the two that are currently at the high school, were in a situation where they had been flooded during the hurricanes, Irene and Florence that flooded that school. So it was, it was a great, it was all, a long day, because we drove there and came right back. It was a long day, but it was really, really good. We were happy to do that. So more to come on that. Lastly, I usually don't have miscellaneous, but we did fail to add something. Also, if you haven't heard, we did receive a grant to get more SROs in our district. We're still working out all the details of that, because there is some match and some details to work out with the sheriff. But we are really excited about that. And more to come, but very excited about the things going on in Pamlico County Schools. So with that, Mr. Chairman, that's all I have.
All right, thank you. Any comments? Always like to give our board members any comments y'all would like to make since our last meeting? All right, hearing none. Agenda item four, our consent agenda, everybody's had a chance to read through these. If we need to pull one for individual approval, we can. If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Motion.
Motion second, all in favor, raise your right hand. All right, thank you. Moving on to agenda item five, instruction. Ms. Dixon?
Good evening, everyone. An adherence to General Statute 115(c)(105.39)39, we are submitting for board review tonight the district support plan for Fred Anderson Elementary. Due to Fred Anderson's identification as a low-performing school by the state, the superintendent or designee is required to present a plan for improving both the school performance grade and school growth score, including how the superintendent and other central office administrators will work with the school and monitor the school's progress. The Pamlico County Board of Education will have 30 days to review this preliminary plan and vote to approve, modify, or reject it. During this time, the plan will be made available to the school and district stakeholders, including parents, staff, and students, to allow for written feedback. You have a copy of the plan in the packets Tiffany provided earlier last week. This plan will be posted on both the district and school websites starting tomorrow with a link for feedback to the document. Feedback will be collected and used to revise the plan if necessary, and the final draft will be presented to board members at our December meeting for approval. I'll be happy to answer any questions you have regarding this requirement or the plan itself, either tonight or during this review phase. And this was just an item for information tonight.
Yep, yep.
Thank you.
Jamie and Eric, I'm gonna ask y'all, make sure y'all get a copy of this before y'all leave tonight, because you'll be sitting up here next month.
When it's approved.
Let's see, 5.1, 5.2. Dr. Johnson, you're already there.
He's excited.
Excited, I'm excited about it. In all seriousness, I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight about something I'm very passionate about, something that's very near and dear to my heart, and that is career and technical education. This month is Career Development Month, and I really could think of no better time to bring an update to the board about the things that are happening in career and technical education in Pamlico County Schools. And when, when I was in school, you all were in school, you probably heard it referred to as vocational education. When I started teaching in 1998, it had evolved, it was called workforce development education. And then a few years later, became career and technical education, and has, has, that has sort of stuck over the years. But I really like what the, what CTE has developed over time, and that is, that's the phrase, that it is learning that works. And that's something that we want to emphasize, and that is work skills and, and creating opportunities for students to be successful in careers. So like I said, being that it's Career Development Month, I wanted to give you a quick overview of career and technical education in Pamlico County Schools, because as it has evolved over the years, this isn't the vocational education of yesteryear, it's not, but the relevance has never ceased to be, be there. The, the importance to Pamlico County and North Carolina, the United States in general, is very important for that career and technical education continue to have an important role in, in our public schools. And so these are the program areas that are offered in Pamlico County right now, and it's changed a little bit over the years. It's changed a little bit over the past year. Never before have we seen program areas represented like they are right now at Pamlico County Middle School. And I think that's a really excellent thing. We have agricultural education, family and consumer science, and then a STEM pathway that feeds directly into the pathways that we have at, at the high school. The ag ed, family and consumer science, computer science, and information technology, and then that trade, technology, engineering, and industrial education. And so we're excited about everything that's happening in, in that. And one of the things we wanted to do tonight is, is really let you know what we are offering at these schools. Pamlico County Middle School, and I want to also give you an opportunity to kind of put a face with a name. So we've had several of our CTE teachers to come tonight, and we're, we're excited that they're here with us. Some had a prior commitment and couldn't be here, but when I call your name, you'll stand up. This, this lady's no stranger to us, although she's sort of new to the role in, in CTE. Ms. Sherry Hale is our STEM teacher at the middle school. She's teaching engineering, meeting technology, and that's a middle school course, and those kids are very excited. We have really, she has jumped into that just enthusiastically, and we're excited about the, the program that she has over there. She's been really working on a partnership with STEM East, or with, excuse me, with FRC East, and they have really been, they've been there several times. And that, that is a tremendous partnership that we want to continue to develop, not just at the middle school, but at the high school as well, as it is a major employer in, in our region, and we want to continue to, to grow that. So thank you, Ms. Hale, for everything you're doing. Right beside her, we have Ms. Jennifer Hacker. Ms. Hacker was a teacher assistant for years at, at Pamlico County Primary School and has moved to CTE, teaching agricultural education at the, at the middle school, and we are super excited. If you just have a conversation with her for a few minutes, you will, you'll get to hear about showing animals and, and doing things. She came in here just a li, little bit late. She had students doing some community service at a horse rescue this afternoon. So she is really taking advantage of this opportunity, just jumped in with both feet, and we're all excited about that. And then Ms. Sarah Forbes couldn't be with us tonight, but she has, she's doing a foods and nutrition class over at, at the middle school. And if you ever have a chance to go by the middle school and check that out, our maintenance department did a fantastic job.
Yes, they did.
Retrofitting an old classroom and really making it just a showpiece, really nice foods lab for Ms. Forbes' class. So we're excited about everything that's happening at Pamlico County Middle School. Similarly, we're excited about the high Similarly, we're excited about the high school. We've got several new faces at the high school. Some of that new, those new classes we're talking about, we, we don't teach keyboarding and typing and things like that anymore. Instead, we've got digital design and animation and drone technology. Ms. Brandy Angelo has, this is her first year at the high school. She's been in the district in, in a couple of different roles. Lastly, teaching English Language Arts at the middle school. But she has a background in photography and, and digital design, and she is doing a fantastic job at the high school. She just got her remote pilot's license like a week ago. And so that's, that's essential because what we want are our students are going to get those remote pilot licenses as they learn to fly the drones, which is an emerging technology, and it's an emerging opportunity for employment. That's, that's something that's, that's totally new, but it is becoming more and more popular and prevalent. And she's, she's got some students that'll be taking that credential test later in the semester. Construction Core Carpentry 1 and 2 is not a course that's new, but we have a new face there, and we are thankful for him. Mr. A.C. Harris is here, and we are excited that he's with us. He came, we was hired like three days before school started. It was just really, I remember in the interview, he was talking about his experiences and everything. And, and he said, what? And I just said, man, where you been? It's like he fell out of the sky, and here he is. But we're real excited about the, the work that he's doing. Mr. Keith Reese couldn't be with us, but you all know about the pop, just the real popular classes that he has in culinary arts at the high school. Ms. Hannah Hardy is our new animal science teacher. She also couldn't be with us. But we're, we're happy that she's with us and, and the work that she's doing in animal science over there at the high school. We have a new ag mechanics teacher, and he is with us tonight, Mr. Steven Brown. He is teaching ag mechanics 1 and 2, and will be teaching horticulture in the spring. And so we are super excited about the work that he's doing, both as an agriculture teacher and FFA advisor at Pamlico County High School. Thank you for, for being here tonight. Talked about Ms. Forbes. She's teaching child development, counseling, mental health at the high school. And Ms. Tammy Taylor, I hate she couldn't be here tonight. She is, she had a prior engagement at church. But she is our new public safety and EMT teacher. And that has been a process getting these courses approved. Our memorandum of understanding has been sent to the state. I heard back from the DPI consultant today. He said, we're good. From hi- his point, there is one other approval that's going to come through, but I don't see any, any problems with that. Ms. Taylor has just really, she's a certified EMT instructor, which you must have to teach this course. And those do not, those, those folks are, are hard to find, so we're real fortunate. She's in Pamlico County and here with us. And so, yes, we had a helicopter land out here on the football field today. It was exciting to see. And we just were thankful for the opportunity. This is a brand spanking new program. But in our conversations with Pamlico Rescue Squad and Pamlico Emergency Management is something that's sorely needed. So we're, we're excited to be able to, to offer that for our students. We have three goals that I wanted to share with you tonight, and that's just lending, talking about the direction of, of the program. First, we intend to significantly increase the number of students who earn industry-recognized credentials. This is something that we, you know, when I was teaching, there'd be a course at the, a test given at the end of the, of the year, VOCATS. You may have heard and remember that. It was a hundred-question multiple-choice test, and that's real good and all. But nobody wanted to know how you scored on your VOCATS test at, you know, when you go off looking for employment. Rather, now there are industry-recognized credentials that our students can earn. And when they come out of, of high school, they have that, that they can say, yes, I am certified in this. You know, in order for our students to take drone, that drone technology part two, they have to have earned that industry credential just to get to that next level. And so we're excited about the direction of CTE. I mean, our students will be earning industry-recognized credentials in, in a lot of the areas that, that you see there. Some of them still have an end-of-course test, but many of them have moved to credentials, and that's what we want to see happen. Secondly, we want to revitalize our, our career and technical student organizations. CTE student organizations are super important. They took a hit, lasted everything during the pandemic, but we want to see them revised and revitalized. And, and our, our advisors are very much interested in doing just that. I mean, speaking from my personal experience, I am standing before you tonight because of my experiences in FFA and agricultural education in high school. That, that's the truth. It's not hyperbole. It's not an exaggeration. It changed my life. First time I ever went to Raleigh in my life, I was on an FFA trip. First time I was ever on an airplane in my life, I was on an FFA trip. It, you know, opens the doors for our students. And I'm excited to be able to, you know, see that become more of a prevalent thing at our high school. So we're excited about that. And that's moved on down to the middle school, too. Ms. Hale and Ms. Hacker both started FFA and Skills USA chapters at the middle school. They've got probably as many students interested there as we do at the high school right now. Have been on a couple of different field trips with them. Ms. Hale's class won the pumpkin carving contest for the state of North Carolina. They, they entered it, and lo and behold, won. But it was all just something to get these students involved, and we're super excited and thankful for what you do because you are changing lives. And lastly, for my part, we want to develop and strengthen our relationships with our industry partners. We want to consult with them and talk with them and make sure that we are in sync with them in providing that, that trained workforce that, that they're looking for. And to that end, Mr. Sean Kerwin's our career development coordinator, and he's going to come forward and tell you about what he's doing as career development coordinator in our district. Before he does, just want to talk about Sean for just a minute. He and I have known each, I, I've known him basically for most of my adult life. We met when I was my second year at NC State. And, and we've been friends ever since. And we, so we, we lived together one year. We graduated together. And in 2005, we came down here and we started teaching together. He's from Pamlico County. I am not. But I've been here long enough that I feel like it's, it is certainly home. And so I appreciate everything that Sean does in this role. He has taught agriculture for about 23 years and decided to move in this new role at CDC. And this being Career Development Month, the governor's proclaimed that November 6th, I think, is actually Career Development Coordinator Day. And so on behalf of the North Carolina Department of Public Instruction, I'm going to present you this. So anyway, he's going to share with you a little bit about what he's doing as career development coordinator. And I think when he's finished, you're going to be just as excited as I am about the great things happening in CTE.
Good evening. I'm glad that John did not put the three-minute timer on the board over there because that wouldn't work. It definitely wouldn't work. Couple of years ago, Ms. Jackson asked me, she said, do you want to be the career development coordinator? I said, yes, I would. But I did not deal with crying children. That is my deal. I'm not a guidance counselor. No crying children. So things went by, and the job started. Okay, that job description is clear as blood. But last year, very thankful, very blessed that the right people fell in my lap to help me become successful. And we made it through last year. And after going to all these meetings and all, meeting all these people, next year's going to be better. But this is next year, and it is great. I'm glad we have all these new staff, and I'm going to tell you, you should fight for my job when I retire. I have a best job. No tennis, no discipline, no parents.
Stop talking, Sean. Stop talking.
I get to go on every field trip because I need a male chaperone because everybody can't get all work.
Can you cut his mic off?
Sorry. Ms. Jackson, essentially, I appreciate that. The joke was when I first took this job, what did you do? Well, I'm the CDC. Everybody listening, I'm like, huh, CDC? Might not have scared them. It has been a trip to say the least. I've met a lot of interesting people, and we built a lot of partnerships. So I'll start with that. My goal is to work Pamlico County schools and its students' grades. We're going to clear 5th grade because we see them just a little bit, and I just like more of that. And basically, 6 through 12. I love it. I get to live, somebody's having something in the middle school. I get my truck. I go to the middle school. I get dinner. I hang out. I get to do their full project, and then I go back to high school.
Sean, you need to get to the mic or they can't hear you online.
I thought I was loud, but anyway. I didn't want to blow it right here, though. But my goal is to provide as many career opportunities to students in Pamlico County schools as possible. The tides have changed. Not everybody needs a four-year degree anymore. You do need a two-year degree, or you need trade school, or you need certification. And these kids can come straight out of high school with a little bit more, I will explain in a minute, and kill it. I'm talking about $30 an hour, straight out the box, no experience, and make a good living. Okay? They got a degree. They got a certification. That money keeps bumping up, and I'll explain it then. But some of the things, and I always mean something, go to, I learned about major clarity. So I come back and it's Dr. Johnson, we got to make it by major clarity. It is the best program out. He said, well, what does it do? And I showed it to him. When we get finished grade 6 through 12, we'll have a career development program, or a career development, it was my mind now. Plan. That's it. Plan. So that they can know what they're going to do. But don't worry, as little Susan decides that she wants to be a teacher one day and a nurse the next, we can flip it around. It'll also help with guidance. It will also help with us making sure that we have CTE completers so they take that ever-important work keys test. Because every child in Pamlico County school system should take the work keys test while they're in high school. Because every major employer is requiring the work keys. And if you don't have it, you have to take it down. You have to go get it, and it's about $100. Because you know anything that's dealing with educational testing, it's going to be at least $100, and that's just a register. That's not a taken test. Y'all split the pie. Because y'all know, so y'all have been there. But anyway. But major clarity will help with that. It's all the career development things that I've been shown over the past year and a half, and it's packaged in one neat little program. It has everything. It has places where we can put scholarships. We can register for classes. We can make sure they're completers. We can make sure that they're on a career track, whether it be CTE, or ROTC, or BAN, or whatever. So it's not just strictly CTE. Okay? It has places for scholarships. It has places they keep their resume. And the cool thing is, until your email address runs out, you have access to this account. So if you're 57 years old, you can still get a major clarity and work and go through things and see things if you wanted a career change at 57. Internships. A lot of internships are coming back to our students and possibilities. A lot of major players, which I will explain in a minute, have came to me and said, we would like to reform a partnership with you. And that is very good because our kids can go get some of these high-skill jobs and do very well at it and create a living for themselves. Also along with that is apprenticeship and co-op. We're looking to start kids back in the community, back working with our local employers and getting high school credit. And then that really important, building a resume, you know, I did an internship. I did an apprenticeship. I did a co-op. And we need that. We need people in Pamlico County, and Bogart County, and Craven County, and Jones County, and all in our area to see how great our students are. Because we have a lot of good kids in that building over there that have a lot of good skills from the classes they take. And people just need to know what we done and what we do because it's been a secret for a long time. And then kids come out and do something, and they're like, wow, that's really impressive. It's like, yeah, it's just everything, but thanks, you know? And in job shadow, we want to get, so kids can go explore careers. One of the biggest things I believe is important is job shadow because you may say, when I grew up, I would be a wildlifeologist. I thought it was like wild king. You go out and you shoot bears. You put a tranquilizer on them, or tranquilize them, put a coddle around them, you attract them to the wood, see what they eat, see where they go, all this good stuff. I found out that, yeah, they track them out, mice, rats, eight hours a day. No. Glad I got that experience, so I know better. But I think a lot of kids need to experience some things just so they know, this is for me or this is not for me. And they're not making lifelong decisions that they're going to college for the next many years and then deciding that they hate the career they're in, so they fall back on something else that they really like. Continuing on, how are we going to get it? We've got to have lots and lots and lots of kind of cooperation. Through our community, through our schools, from everybody, parents and things like that. And the biggest thing is build relations with community partners and our business and industry partners. Pamlico County has poor businesses, what you think they do. Some of them are like, wow, I didn't even do that. I was playing my lives in a minute. But you know, anybody we can get into, anybody we can get our students in, that's what we want to do. We want our students out there. We want to work in the community and things like that. So that's what we're going to do. We're going to last cooperation to go first. I know people don't like me because I constantly go on a field trip. But our kids need to know what is going on and what's available to them, and a lot of it is free. And you can go somewhere and get training for free. Every parent loves that. You know what I'm saying? You can go get my kid a two-year certification, and it's free. Sign me up. So. But that's what I'm working with business and issue. Again, also upcoming events. His career development month, as Dr. Johnson said earlier. The other day, we went to the fifth grader, we did a reverse wax museum. Sorry, I don't have pictures. What they do, you know, little kids do a wax museum, and they tell you, I'm, I'm Dale Aronhar. I'm Jackie Robinson. I'm this person. They explain everything about it. Well, the CTE kids that were picked out as leaders in their respective program areas went and presented careers relating to CTE courses to the fifth graders. You want to see some cool stuff? Go watch the fifth graders get excited about, oh, can I do this? Did you do this? It's amazing. They get all into it, and they remember stuff. And then when they come to the high school four years later, they're like, I will take that class. And I want to do that because I really like what I saw. There's a lot of excitement every time we've been in the middle with the fifth graders because they like what they see, and it's different, and it's new, and it's exciting. And they learn a lot about things that they have never seen before. The Bolt Center, sorry to give, but just by closing, the Bolt Center. Bolt Center, Craven County, take a careful exit, is in the old letter building. They have a lot of certifications in technical areas and a lot of connections with people in Craven, Rover, and Palmetto County that they can get our students jobs. We are not competing, or they're not competing with Palmetto Community Colleges, but they have a whole lot of H-bag. Woman, electrical, construction, diesel mechanic program, but they say they fight over the kids. When the kids are in the program, they come in and all the big players, Gregory Poole, Volvo, White, I think it is, come in and they whine and dine these kids, and they solicit them right then and there, like, hey, come work for me. I'll give you $60,000 a year starting out. Two-year certification program. We've also come back to, Bosch has invited us back to go there, and that is huge. We work hard with Bosch. Ms. Jackson's son, Taylor, went to the Bosch internship, and I didn't see him the other day, but I saw Travis, and Travis and I had a good chat. Travis is another student in Pamlico County. They have come back and said they want to play ball with us. So each, I've been over there, Thursday, we've three times. It amazes me. One of the kids goes, if ADD had a name, it would be Bosch. Because there is stuff going everywhere. They have a pool of stuff in that place, and it's going everywhere. Sorry, I don't have pictures because we had to, we had to sign a non-disclosure agreement. And I told them, I said, if they catch you, you're going to German jail. You don't want to go to German jail. They don't matter, but anyway. Because they might get hit by a piece of equipment. But we work with Bosch. NC Works, I learned last year, I met this wonderful woman named Sheena Walker from NC Works. She is absolutely fantastic. She comes in, and she can speak to this group of students, and she can speak to this group of students, and she can speak to this group of students. And she brings it down with her presentations about how you're supposed to act when you go to a job interview, what you're supposed to wear, what your 30-second elevator speech. The other day, she had her seniors in there, and she's like, 30-second elevator speech, now. People's like, oh, okay. But she's, she's ex-military. She's very good at what she does. I am very blessed to know her. She has a lot of connections. But she is great. She tells these kids what they need to hear. You know, she's not their employer, but she'll tell them straight up, this is why you did not get that job. Are you feeling that? I have a case of, that is not good. Oh, you can spend an hour and you spent five minutes on this application? No, they're not hiring you. They're not calling you back. Oh, you were that? No. So. But that, she's a great asset to have, and her kids to get information from. We're working on a new dream tour, and the other thing we got coming up is Craven Community College at Havlock for an event. Craven Community College at Havlock has aerospace engineering. They also have sheet metal tech, which apparently, if you want to work in sheet metal, you could take like a four-month course, and you'll be making a job back for the kick people. So, you know, that's a very good course that they have over there. And then they have some other engineering that goes into the 2+2 program. So that's the places that we're going, and we've been, and we're going to go again. And that's why I put up there, relationships that I have been formed with other students. First, we got FRC East. That was the one for me. Come find out, the lady that we were connected with at FRC East, she, she emailed me that night. I wonder if you would still. she could, she emailed me that night, I wonder if you was still? Looking at the Bible, and I called her, I said, is this the Michelle that used to teach Ag in Garver County? She said, yes. And I thought that was you, Sean Carroll, and I said, yes, that was me. So we hooked up with FRC East. Miss Hale has reaped the benefits of FRC East. Her boy comes in there every day, he's making three-D airplanes, they're printing all kinds of three-D stuff. He's got the coolest stuff ever that is happening with our middle school kids. Um, Bosch, Bosch has come in, because like I said, with key tour of Bosch, Bosch has also come to work with our STEM kids at middle school. Last house other, she goes, who's your STEM teacher at middle school? And I said, Sherry Hale, and I will send you your contact info. And it was almost, I think, that afternoon, she had contacted back and set up a date for Bosch to come do STEM stuff with our middle school kids. And that is huge, because then Bosch is in these kids' mouth. And Bosch is not that bad whatsoever. Um, sometimes I have to watch taking teachers on these trips, because they start doing the math.
Oh, gosh.
But anyway, um, this is the Bosch Center, Craven Community College. Like I said, or on the other, Mr. Parker, Craven Community College, NC Works, Craven Community College at Havlock, and then the Chamber. The Chamber is helping out tremendously. Um, I met with her last year, can't remember her name. I haven't, but her email address is at pamlicochamber, and I've got her name stored somewhere on my phone. But she's a great asset to have. I've been to the Rotary Club, and I've met those people, and saw the cool things they do, and things like that. So there's possibilities there, getting our kids working in local businesses and things of that nature. Okay, next, who we wanna work with, International Labor. You know, all these companies that I talked about, early people leave Pamlico County, and this is where they go work at. They go work at FRC East, they go work at Bosch, they go work at MOLI, they go work at International Labor, they go work at Nutrien. Okay, and then here's the weird one. Innovator Laminations, does anyone know who that is?
Rillsborough.
Rillsborough, does anyone know what they do?
Laminations Department.
They did that next, Dr. Johnson looked it up. We did, they made car dashes and all these other.
They do.
Not sure. But that guy I talked to him, and that lady was super excited, she said, yes, we want her on our own folks. So I was definitely very excited, and the guys couldn't get a happy name about that. So these are some of the people we're working with. Now here's what we want, we want Havers, but not called Havers. You know Havers, who's been bought up by Jimmy Mars doing the mass production, and they're now making mass production. They're just the yachts, because people can't afford the yachts, because they didn't afford a fishing boat. Um, she told me I could come in and plus a coat. But she was glad to come to our career fair, which will be in April. So that was a plus. Okay, we can't get the kids in there, but they can come to the kids and tell them how to do it. Okay, if you have anybody that you think I missed, please email me, text me, come see me, whatever, with any reference or any contact you have, I want them, so we can get our, get our kids in there. Okay, and the cool thing about a lot of these companies is, that kid goes over there. They will pay them to go to Craven Community College, and they will pay for Craven Community College. You just have to work with them. They sign the contracts. At the end of the two years, when they get their associate degree, they'll also work with them to go to East Carolina University and NC State University. And they may never have to leave Pamlico County, because with the way of technology, you can get a degree from wherever and never leave your house. So there's opportunities for our kids, if they decide, well, in my shop, one of you comes, you can start a high school loan and become like higher up in management without having to agree from anybody. They like hard work. Um, but if you know anybody, please email me or text me. Okay, last line, then I'll be quiet, I promise. Okay, um, you might know Josh. Josh is one of my superstar students.
He's wonderful.
He is great. I caught, I talked, caught up in my office today and just, yeah? I said, I need to take your picture. He gives me this weird look. I said, it's nothing crazy, man. I swear, but anyway. I took Josh, Josh said he wanted to be a welder, he was understudy, but he knew he wanted to go to work when he graduated in January. I said, okay, well, we'll carry you here, we'll carry you there, we'll show you this. We got through the Bosch Center, and Kyle was talking about, if you wanna get your fourth-year certification, we have a weekend class, and it's free. It is sixty-some hours, and it's free, and when you get your certification, they will start you out the door, twenty dollars an hour, no experience whatsoever. Josh looked at me when we were getting ready to leave, he goes, hey, Mr. Carroll, can I, um, sign up for that? I'm like, sure, buddy, ain't you eighteen? I mean, I don't let your parents care or whatever. He goes, we're good, I'll sign up for it. I said, well, Josh is really good, I'm proud of you for doing that. He said, you wanna know why I'm gonna do it? I said, sure. He said, it gives me a leg up on everybody else applying for that job. So, very smart young man. If I have this and I go in these companies, I'm sorry if I broke the thing, but, um, anyway, um, if he goes into these companies, he has a leg up on everybody else, because he has a certification. Okay, and they want him, because he has proven that he has something. Okay, he told me the other day, he said, you know, the people at Bosch, at Bosch Center really like us. I said, well, that's good, I'm glad you're a good representative of us. He said, yeah, they're starting a program with Nutrien, John, I didn't know you knew this, but they're doing some kind of internship with Nutrien. He said, two years, he said, I can go to Nutrien and make like twenty-one dollars an hour. But if I go through their program, they'll start me at thirty dollars an hour. I said, well, okay, Josh, you go ahead, buddy, and I'm very proud of you, let me know how it goes. But this is why, students like that, that is finding a passion, finding a career, don't necessarily want to go to college, but is willing to put the effort extra, effort extra, I can't even speak, okay? Well, let's get that part, but anyway. He put in the effort to go get certification, so that he can be very marketable to any young boy. Okay, and all right, um, I'll be quiet now, because I have nothing else, but if you have any questions, please, so.
You blew three minutes up.
All right, well, we, we totally destroyed three minutes, but, uh, if you're not excited about career and technical education in Pamlico County schools, after all that, um, were you paying attention? We, we have great things happening, we have great teachers on staff, we have a team put together, and, uh, there's something for everybody in career and technical education in Pamlico County schools. Thank you for your time.
I disagree with one thing you said. Sean Carroll, I disagree with one thing you said. If ADD had a name, it would not be Bosch, it would be Sean Carroll.
It would be Sean Carroll.
Whatever it were.
I think it's really exciting. It's, those are great opportunities.
Hold on a second, Mr. Curtis, because, um, the great presentation, and I'll say echo and Dr. Johnson. In the academic scholarship that I went to school on, in my final interview, these folks had no idea what FFA was. And that's the whole, all my questions then started centering around FFA, and they're like, you're on a parliamentary procedure team, yep, and sole judging team, yep, and ag mechanics team, yep, and parli-- you know, just, we didn't know FFA had all that, so I'm a strong advocate of career and technical education. I got several questions, which fellow board members, if you hadn't seen on Facebook, we got chickens at the middle school now. Yep, working on, working on.
We have the fence.
They boarded up the fence, and they got a chicken coop built, and some other stuff going on, so we got chickens. What is meeting technology? Because I think I know what it is, but.
Pretty much them.
Okay, but with meeting, so, okay, well, I was thinking, okay, maybe they're finally teaching kids how to do.
Introducing them to the whole outlet.
Okay, all right.
As much as we possibly can.
Good, good. And the, um, let's see, she's like, they're the drone classes.
He just walked out. She just walked out.
Yeah, it's, if you need any assistance at Nutrien, let me know, because it's amazing what they're doing with drones over there now. They're, they're doing flying war piles, they're flying inside buildings, they're flying the whole mine, it's amazing. Um, but thank y'all for what y'all doing, and, and outstanding program. And thank you for all the teachers that took your time out tonight to come and, and let us see the, the great things that y'all are doing. Um, I think this whole board is a strong supporter of, of what you do in our career education programs. So thank you. Any comments from other board members? I know we got a basketball game at nine, so I've been told to kind of speed things up a little bit. Lyndy, it seems like you were just here last week, so welcome back again. Mr. Curtis.
Thank you, Mr. Prescott. Um, I do have one request. Uh, next year I'd like to do the audit report before the CTE presentation. What an act to follow that is.
Yeah.
Uh, this is good stuff, though, it really is.
The teachers that are here, if y'all need to leave, you're welcome to, unless y'all want to stay for the audit report. But I know y'all got school tomorrow, so, but thank you.
Steve, like, what are you doing?
Steve, you saved it just for me, didn't you?
I did.
Ooh.
Uh, we do appreciate, uh, Lyndy Faulkner being here. He's our auditor. He's been here several times over the years, and he's here to present the audit for the fiscal year that ended June thirtieth, 2022. Uh, I did give you the condensed version of the, of the audit. I didn't think you wanted all ninety-seven pages. So I whittled it down to about nineteen, so Lyndy's gonna kind of just hit the highlights. And if you have any questions, uh, he'll be more than happy to answer them.
Thank you, Steve. Yeah, I'm gonna do the blame with Jackson or Mr. Prescott to make it be followed.
Tiffany.
I can't, I can't present this audit with that kind of enthusiasm. But, uh, came like Steve said, he got a condensed version, um, about nineteen, twenty pages, so I'm just gonna go over the pages that, uh, he has passed out to you. So the first thing I'm gonna go over is the, uh, the report of independent auditors. And this just simply states that we've audited the financial statements of Pamlico County Schools on June thirtieth, uh, twenty, uh, 2022. And in our opinion, those financial statements are fairly presented. Goes off as a basis for our opinion, that we audited the financial statements in accordance with, about the, the county principles generally accept in the United States of America. Talks about responsibilities of management for the audit and the auditor's responsibility. That's, uh, page one of the report. Page two talks about some required supplemental information, mainly, um, management's discussion and analysis, or MD and A's you'll hear, uh, sometimes referred to. And then the, um, pension and what they call OPEB, uh, other post-employment benefit liabilities. And then there's also some supplement, supplemental information to look at concerning the individual fund statements. Uh, page three talks about, uh, compliance or return control over the federal and state awards. So that's really what our auditor, uh, I mean, our, our auditor's report goes to, or goes into. But let's look at some of the individual statements and schedules that you have. So the first one we're gonna go over is gonna be exhibit one. This is what we call a government-wide statement. And by that, I mean, it takes, it kind of looks at the, called a long-term focus of everything. It takes into consideration your capital assets and all of your long-term debt. Capital assets being your buildings, equipment, and so forth. And the long-term debt being these big pension liabilities, the health insurance liabilities, and any financing you may have, approved vacation, things of that nature. So we have two columns here. We have the governmental activities and the business-type activities, that being the child nutrition. So we see our total, our assets, looking at the total column, our total assets, ten million dollars. And then below that, we have something called deferred outflows. Those are kind of really like prepaid expenses. Those are funds that have already been spent. They're gonna be used for, um, for future benefits. So we have those for the pensions, we have those for, um, the post-employment benefits as well. Under that, you have the liabilities. You see our total liabilities are nineteen million, eight oh four, mainly consisting of two, long-term liabilities of net pension and net OPEB. That's just something, uh, maybe three, four, five years ago, uh, we started having to include those liabilities. Every school system in the state has to, um, have those liabilities shown, and they're all, and it's, it's one big liability, and you get a percentage of it, um, based on, on their calculations. Under that, we have what we call deferred inflows of resources. And those are really like future liabilities that money's gonna have to be spent, um, in the future to meet those needs. So then the assets and the liabilities all come down to a net position. And we have a, a deficit net position of fourteen million dollars on this government-wide statement, mainly, or not mainly, but due to these OPEB and pension liabilities. It's actually a little bit better than it was a year ago. Um, those liabilities decreased simply because of investments and so forth. Um, these are measured as of a certain date and roll forward. So given the way the investments have gone this year, those liabilities are gonna go up a year from now. Anyway, again, this is a government-wide, long-term look at the school system. So let's look at exhibit three, and that kind of will give us a, it will probably be a more short-term focus, and look at, give us a better understanding of, of some of the individual funds. And this will eliminate the long-term liabilities and the capital assets. So exhibit three, maybe you can, oh, if you have it there, you can kind of open it up like a book. On the left-hand side, you have the general fund, the state public school fund, individual schools. On the right-hand side, you have the other funds, other restricted, the federal grants and the capital outlet. This does not include child nutrition. We will look at child nutrition separately in just a minute. So total assets of all the funds, excluding child nutrition, um, about two-point-two million. And then we have very little liabilities, just about a hundred and five thousand liabilities, which account payable, accounts payable. So that's, in this situation, our assets minus our liabilities and just our fund balances, we see you have over two million dollar fund balance, so you have a very healthy balance sheet when you take out these long-term, uh, assets and long-term liabilities. Then at the bottom, there's a reconciliation to get us back to what we have on the, um, long-term schedule, to get back to that, um, net position on exhibit one. So that's a better, kind of a better, um, picture of what your balance sheet looks like with the government funds on a, on a short-term focus. So let's look at exhibit four, to look at the income for the year. Again, this is similar to exhibit three. Open up as a, as a book, and you see the funds. And again, this is not for child nutrition, we'll go over child nutrition in just a moment. But looking at the far right-hand column, you see your total government funds, total revenue of twenty-two million, which is made up of, um, about thirteen point six from Santa, North Carolina. It's about a million dollars more than you received in twenty-one. And you've got money from Pamlico County and the federal government. Pamlico County funding is pretty consistent with what it was a year before. Federal government about three-point-one, so that was up about six hundred thousand dollars. So your total revenue, as I mentioned, is twenty-two million, which is about two-point-two million more than twenty-one. As far as expenditures, you have different areas. We have instructional services, and those are listed under, the expenses are listed under that area. And system-wide support, capital outlay. So overall, your total expenses are twenty-two million, four-seventy. That's up about three-point-three million a year ago. However, a lot of money came in a year ago that was spent this year. Um, so you had a, a big surplus a year ago, and that, the timing of those expenditures kind of happened this year. So overall, um, you, there's only sixty-four thousand dollars more spent than I received. So it's pretty much a break-even. But again, realizing that some of that, uh, revenue came in a year ago and was spent in the current year. So that gives you an idea of the, the net income for the, for those funds. As I mentioned, child nutrition separately, but before we move to child nutrition, are there any questions on anything on the, on the general funds or the other funds that I mentioned? All right, if not, let's go to exhibit seven, and this is the child nutrition balance sheet. Now this is kind of, for child nutrition, it will include the assets and these pension liabilities and so forth, but it's just a very small piece, because, um, you just take a piece of the, the overall total for child nutrition. So assets, you see the total current assets of six-hundred-and-seventy-one thousand. And then their, uh, capital assets are property equipment, so you come to a total assets of seven-sixty-five. You have a little bit of deferred outflows of resources. Then you have liabilities, just a little bit of unearned revenue, and then the pension, OPEB, approved vacation liabilities. So total liabilities of three-seventy. And then you had some deferred inflows of researches, of resources. So then you, all that comes down to a net position, and you have a positive net position of three-hundred-and-eleven thousand dollars. So for many years, we had a deficit in this, um, in child nutrition, but now we have a three-hundred-and-eleven thousand dollar positive net position, so that is very good news. I think that's two years in a row that we have had a strong, um, year with child nutrition. So that's the balance sheet. Let's look at the income statement, you'll kind of see how we're getting a strong net position. Exhibit eight, food sales, twenty-two thousand dollars. We had hardly any year before, because you just didn't have the students in the schools for the food sales. And you have operating expenses, they're up about eighty thousand dollars. However, your not-operating revenues, a one-point-one million increase of a hundred-and-sixty-five thousand. So you take all that together, and you have your changing net position of two-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand. You have net income, child nutrition, two-hundred-and-eighty-five thousand dollars. So it's, uh, very good news for ones that have followed this fund for a long time. You see that that's improved significantly.
Yes.
All right, we have some individual funds that we'll look at, so if you worry, um, information, this should be on page fifty-two, I believe, the general fund. So this is similar to what we were looking at on exhibit four. However, we're gonna show, um, our budget to the actual, in comparison, budget to actual. So you see the revenue and the general fund coming from Pamlico County at four million. And then we have some other revenue. So total revenue is of four million, oh thirty-five, which is right in line with what was budgeted. And then you see all the expenses listed, and you see that all the expenses are under budget. And that continues on to the next page of fifty-three. And that continues on to the next page of fifty-three. You get all the way down to the bottom, just up about four lines, you see revenues over expenditures or net income of thirty-eight thousand. It was actually budgeted at a forty thousand dollar loss. We had the transfers to other funds, which did create a small loss of twenty-one thousand in the general fund. But you can see that an appropriated fund balance of a hundred thousand is anticipated. So a hundred thousand dollar loss was anticipated in the general fund, and only twenty-one thousand loss was realized. So the results were better than predicted or forecast for the general fund. The next one I'd like to show in more detail on is page fifty-five, which is the other restricted fund. Again, this is just what we saw on exhibit four, you were looking at that column, but with the budget numbers. So you see the revenue coming from the state of North Carolina and the federal government, and the other revenue as well. So it comes in at eight hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars of revenue. Again, expenditures, all under budget. Down to the last line, we see a loss of eighty-three thousand. However, it was forecast to be a loss of a hundred and seventy-five thousand, which on the next page you see is the fund balance appropriation. So again, a loss of a hundred and seventy-five was budgeted, but only eighty-three loss was the action number. So it came out better than forecast. Um, page fifty-seven is the capital outlay fund. You see the budgeted and actual revenue there, state of North Carolina, three hundred and ninety-one thousand. Pamlico County, six hundred and twelve thousand for total revenue of one million twenty-seven. The expenditures in the capital outlay fund as well. Capital outlay fund actually has a small profit of ten thousand six hundred. Again, a fund balance appropriation was budgeted for a hundred and thirty-one thousand dollar loss. So again, it came out better than anticipated. And then the last schedule, all the way to, for you, will be on page sixty-eight, sixty-nine. And this is the federal, or scheduled expenditures of federal and state awards. So the first part is the federal grants. This is the federal money that came in and from what departments? So you see the U.S. Department of Agriculture, just over, or just under a million dollars, about a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollar increase from the prior year. Department of Education, all the way down to the bottom, you see two point nine million, an increase of eight hundred and forty thousand. Looking at the next page, you have a little money come in for the Navy Junior ROTC. So total federal assistance, just over four million dollars, which is about nine hundred and seventy-five thousand more than the prior year. And a lot of this is still some of the COVID funds that have come in. So that's your federal assistance. Below that's your state assistance. Department of Public Construction, eleven million, or excuse me, thirteen million, three sixty-seven. And then some, what they call school bus appropriation money as well. So total state assistance, thirteen point six million. So that just gives you an idea of the federal and state money in the areas that those came from. Any questions, anything that I want to know? All right, I appreciate it. Steve and staff continue to do a great job and make our, our job very easy. And we appreciate everything that he does. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Let's see.
I appreciate Lindy coming and giving the report. I'm going, I'm going to give more information next month at the December meeting about child nutrition. It's just, um...
That's awesome.
They've done incredible. I mean, they've gone from losing money every year to, for the past three years, they've, they've had profit and it's increased every, every year. And there's a lot of reasons for that, and I won't go into it tonight. But I would like to give a little more detailed information next month concerning the child nutrition program. And for, for those of y'all who don't know, child nutrition is like its sole proprietorship. They're on their own. They, they have to make their own money. We don't give them any money out of any other fund. So they're just like a small business trying to make it on their own. And for the past two or three years, they've really done, really done a good job. So I'm very, very proud of all those, all those people that are working in our schools and here at the central office. Thank you.
Thank you, and I think this audit is a direct reflection of what you do with our finance department, Mr. Curtis. It's outstanding work, thank you. Let's see, we do need a motion to approve the annual auditor's report as presented tonight.
Motion.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, raise your right hand. All right, thank you. Let's see. Moving on to agenda item seven, governance. As we have to do every month now, discuss our COVID-nineteen protocols for Pamlico County Schools. Our current protocol is that it's mask optional. If we need discussion, we can. If we want to keep things the way they are, I'll entertain a motion to approve as we have been doing the past several months.
Motion.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, raise your right hand. All right, our protocols will stay the same. And Mr. Dudley?
All right. I move that the Pamlico County Board of Education enter into closed session to consider confidential student matters as provided in N.C. General Statute one four three dash three eighteen point one one A one and the Family Educational Rights and Privacy Act twenty U.S.C. one two three two G and G S one fifteen C dash four oh two. Confidential personnel matters as provided in N.C.G.S. one four three dash three eighteen one one A one five and six and one fifteen C dash three nineteen and to consult with the Board of Education Attorney in order to preserve your attorney-client privilege as provided in General Statute one four three dash three eighteen point one one A three.
All right, I have a motion, I need a second.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor, raise your right hand. All right, we'll be going into closed session at seven thirty. All right, we're out of closed session. You good, Katie?
Wait, wait, are we back open? Are we open?
We're back on, okay. All right, we're out of closed session, so action following closed session. I need a motion to approve the personnel report for action as presented in closed session.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, um, the next motion is that we approve the personnel matter as discussed and presented in closed session.
Motion, second.
Motion is second. All in favor, raise your right hand. All right, you see your meeting dates. Remember they start at 6:00. Ms. Judy and Mr. Delmar expect to see y'all online next month watching our meeting.
That was funny. That was real funny.
If we were to have a call meeting before the end of this month, we would have to...
Y'all would have to come.
You would have to be there, absolutely.
That is true. So don't turn in your gavel yet.
They may don't have one.
Yep. Uh, we're gonna miss y'all in Greensboro, but I look forward to seeing everybody else there, um, getting there Sunday afternoon.
John always finds good rest for y'all.
That's right.
He'll know where to go.
If there's nothing else, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor, raise your right hand. We are adjourned.
We are adjourned.
Done and done.
Thank you.